Okay, looks like we're on recording. I'd like to call this meeting to order June fifteenth, nineteen, sorry, twenty twenty-three, Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to make just a quick announcement. You know, in order to get back to proper decorum and all that, I request that all comments and complaints and outbursts be held to the point where we have a general discussion where I open it up to the public. So I just ask folks to refrain from making any comments until then. That being said, has anybody taken a chance, look at the approved minutes, manifests? Anybody? Any questions, comments? Has anybody taken a look at those?
There are some corrections noted, notated on the last page.
I'm sorry?
There are some corrections noted on the last page.
Okay.
I believe they've been highlighted for you.
I did see that. So where it's highlighted, it's been corrected?
Needs to be corrected.
Needs to be corrected.
Alright, so why don't we table those till the next meeting?
You can approve them with the corrections noted.
Everybody good with that? Everybody had an opportunity to read it? Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the June fifth meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call, all in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Schrean.
Aye, John Warren.
I've been Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, unanimous? Payroll?
Make a motion to approve the manifest accounts payable and payroll.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Tim DeBrio. Roll call, all in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Schrean.
Aye, John Warren.
I've been Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, unanimous? And, non-public?
I make the motion to approve the non-public minutes from the June fifth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Schrean.
Aye, John Warren.
I've been Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, moving right on to the reports from assigned boards and committees. The budget hasn't met yet, have they?
We did meet.
You did, okay.
So, we had our first meeting, May eighteenth. We had a little discussion on how to fill the position that, who was it that left us?
Michelle King.
Michelle King. It's a fair amount of discussion on how to do it, whether we hired the next vote getter. I suggested that we, we appoint the person who's best suited to work with the Budget Committee. So there's three, three people there, Hal Raftner, Alan Bernstein, and Tom, excuse me, I'll butcher his name, Budicek, is that, how do you pronounce?
Ukevich.
Ukevich?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Say that three times.
Yeah, say that three times fast? No, no, thank you. So they all presented themselves, in the end, the board elected or appointed Tom Budicek. Again? What's that name? Dramatically?
Tom B.
Tom B. We also, let me check my minutes here, made a motion to nominate Michael Kelly as Chair, and Mr. Owen Friend Gray as Vice Chair, voted to elect Robert Kelly as CIP rep, and also Jeffrey Morrison to the School Facilities Committee. So that kind of sums it up. We'll meet again September seventh.
So, how, what was, what's the timeframe left in that open position?
He'll fill it for one year.
One year, okay. Planning?
We had a meeting on Wednesday. We had two cases on the agenda. First case was, I'm gonna call it the Nottingham Business Park, we'll call it, otherwise known as the old USA Springs area. That meeting was pushed, so next meeting is scheduled for a month out. The reason for pushing that was due to stratospheric regional impacts, the study that needs to be done, per the planning board's requests, and there wasn't enough time between that meeting and the last meeting in order to get all the information, so that was pushed. The second was, we had two nice ladies from Northwood that are opening up business on the Northwood Nottingham line at the end of one fifty-six, at one fifty-two, right next to the bagel place, it's actually in Northwood, which is, the line literally separates the two buildings, which they're gonna be an upscaled slash antique crafts store, they're gonna make gift baskets, gonna do a bunch of different things like that. So we gave approval for hours for operations, if they wanted to start at eight in the morning to go over eight at night, even though they were requesting lesser hours, we told them that more would be better if they needed it. Went over some property details, and gave them the blessing for the board for their success. So they hopefully will be opening up in the next, I think they wanted to open up by maybe the beginning, middle of July or so, really, so they're actually moving inside and moving along to get it. I don't know the name of the place yet. I forgot, I don't even know if they, they don't have a sign or anything yet, that was part of the discussion, so.
Just the one that has the vehicles inside, inside of it right now?
Could be, yeah, the glass frontage on the ones, yeah. It was a kind of, suppose there's gonna be a car dealership back in, but it never actually really came into fruition for that car dealership, so they took it over, and now are the new renters of the building, so it should be a pretty good place. Everybody was talking about the bagels next door, but that was something I haven't been over to yet, but I wish them good luck in their success, and nice to see a business on the move. So the meeting was actually probably the shortest planning board meeting that I've been on in forever. It was only like an hour and fifteen minutes, which was amazing.
Awesome.
So, yeah, trust me, that is a short meeting. So it went well, and then we'll have our next meeting coming up in two weeks, in July, for some other pre-cases that'll be coming up.
Okay, thank you. CIP didn't meet. Marston?
I met with Courtney a few weeks ago, and she's doing, the rec is doing a really thorough study right now, over the summer, to kind of determine what the public wants and priorities are for the, the rest of the land over there. I know there's been a lot of talk about a pickleball court, and basketball courts, and things like that, and just figure out what the next steps are. We have a lot of sponsors that are willing to sponsor, it's just tough because we need to know what's going on over there in order to tell them what their sponsorship will get them, so.
Okay.
Can I ask, I drove by on Sunday, and I noticed the cement was poured for the dugouts, but the buildings weren't constructed yet.
No, so they-
Is there a timeline on that?
Yeah, so the materials are over there for the softball dugouts, they, I'm not gonna say who delivered them, but they delivered them to the wrong site, so we had to wait for them to move them, and so they moved them a couple weeks later. So the week we planned to build and construct those-
Well, 'cause I thought they were gonna be constructed, that's why, that's the reason why I'm asking, because the last discussion, I thought they were gonna be-
Weekend we were supposed to do it-
I was hoping to see them built, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping now that baseball season's wrapped up, in the next couple weekends, we can get over there to get those two done, and then build the baseball ones.
You guys are gonna have those painted and all that stuff too, right?
Vinyl.
Oh, they're gonna be vinyl?
Yeah.
Nottingham green?
Less maintenance.
All right, Town Administrator Report?
Okay, to follow up, we had tabled at the last meeting the location for the election. We were waiting to see who might actually put in their name for candidacy, as to whether there would be one or two. Lori, I'm gonna put you on the spot. I did reach out to the Principal Chris Souza, and August first is tentatively available. The concern is about cleaning and setup. Those would be the details that we'd have to work out if you chose to have it at the school, but then again, the town hall is still available, so whichever one you wanna choose, in your packets, you'll see that there are two candidates.
Would we keep it-
Three?
Two for Republican.
Oh, gotcha.
So there has-
Can I ask a question, please? Due to the potential of a low turnout for the primary, and for the reduce of material and stuff needed, would it be possible to conduct the election in the cafeteria area instead of using the whole gymnasium? Like having, you know, aid booths for people to vote in, and-
The number of booths is dictated by how many people are on the checklist, not how many people you anticipate voting.
So we literally have to set up about twenty-five, or-
So if we had only four thousand people on the checklist, we have to have a certain number of booths. Can't reduce that.
That's why it's the space requirements that's-
Weren't there events happening here that same day?
There are, the National Night Out is scheduled for that day, that's from four to eight PM. The Police Department actually encourages it, because it might actually get people to come and vote, and then participate in that activity, and there's also a summer concert at the bandstand.
Okay.
It, it might be just a good time for the community to just be in one location.
Packing could be an issue, but so be it.
No worse than if it was a well-attended election.
Right.
Do we have to make a decision on where we're gonna have help, have it help? Is that what we're looking to do?
It's August first, so I think probably, you know, the more notice we can get out to the public as to where the polling location is going to be better. If you're not meeting again until July, August first is right around the corner, so.
Right, I wouldn't prolong it. I think we can do it here.
I mean, if Chief is fine with that, I was wondering if she was concerned about it impacting her event, but if she thinks it's gonna have a positive impact.
Yeah, Fawn's good with it, I mean-
And I believe Courtney has already made provisions to cancel summer camp for that day as well, so.
The one thing that I was thinking about over the weekend, and I happen to be here with the NASSL, she said the bridge is, they would have to set up the day before, which is a camp day, but she said technically camp ends at three, so the setup could be done out.
And if it's a good weather day, we can keep them outside.
Anything else?
Oh, you want me to keep going, sorry.
You wanna make a-
We have to make a motion to approve to have them here, or?
Just general consensus to have it here.
General consensus?
Town Hall sounds good.
Yeah, Town Hall sounds good, yep.
While Lori's here, I presented the, the dog licensing.
Email.
If you had any questions for her, I sent it to you by email, and it's in there. She has to provide that list to you by statute.
Are these people that, that need to register?
Funding?
Are these people that need to register their dogs?
That haven't registered from last year. I know one person on there, their dog passed, they just have to come in and tell you that the dog passed, but-
You just send an email.
Okay. Well, I don't need to find my name, but, okay. I reviewed the email, and you are on here.
Yeah, I, I, I already, I didn't need to look at it, I know. I guess we'll tentative do that when we register my car this month.
So there's a little bit more to it than that, if these people don't pay, then we can issue a certified mail, that they have to pay a twenty-five dollar fine called civil forfeiture, plus seven dollars for the certified letter fee, and then if they still don't pay, technically, they can be sent away.
Is this something we normally do?
That's why I'm here.
Okay.
So I'll plug in, oh, it's okay. So, a long time ago, a Board of Selectmen made a decision not to do this. The Board has no right to do that. Two decades ago is what I'm thinking, that decision was made, and there was a memo, which I don't recall ever seeing, and Sandy couldn't find it after a while. So, it's supposed to be done, so I'm doing it, 'cause I'm the one who could get in trouble if it's not done.
And you need from us, just to let us know that it's there to continue on with the next steps, or?
Right, I need to give you the list, and then what we did was we sent letters on Friday and today to everybody on the list-
Okay.
-giving them one last chance. I've sent half a dozen emails to people, postcards, and if they call and say, you know, "My dog passed away," or "I moved," or something like that, or if it's your turn because they moved, we'll just remove them from that list. I think that the list will probably be less than forty names in the end. And then, we send out the letters, once, we'll give you a final list, and then you issue the warrant, or they, do they issue the warrant now? If we don't collect the money-
If you don't collect the money, then they would.
Yep, then you would. So this is just a list right now. Every town in the state does this.
I'm not gonna get any opposition from me, so I'm fine, but I, I know when I'm wrong, so hey, whatever. Let me ask a scapegoat of the story here.
Are dogs done per the month, like your car, or are they done per the year, more like votes?
Per the year, they're all due by April thirtieth every year.
So it's, that's probably some people forget too.
And, you know, on the renewal notices, it's noted on there, don't forget to register your dog, and this year we decided to send out the notices early, we started in January, and we've been doing it every month, a couple of times a month, by email.
But there might have been a lapse for the last couple of years, so now we're trying to get it back to-
Yeah, twenty twenty, no one registered their dog, no one.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty, it, it was across the whole state, you know, so I decided, we're gonna start fresh, go back from the people who just didn't renew till this year, and then go forward.
Okay.
I mean, there are people from twenty eighteen that are on, that were on the list, I didn't include them. They might not have the dog anymore, that's a long time ago.
Yeah.
So, I'm just letting you know that I have to do this.
Nope.
And some towns actually have the police go and collect the money.
One hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So, do they also have to present the rabies vaccination records each, each year, or is it just the first year?
Oh, every time they have a, a new one done, and the veterinarians supply that to us.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And so, that's how we know who has a dog, 'cause the vets give us the licenses, and when we get a new dog that wasn't in the system, we'll send a letter out, but-
And then does the town set the fee, or is that a state set fee?
For the penalty?
Uh, penalties, or even what the current registration fee is, I'm just more learning.
The state does, some towns charge a little bit less than what Nottingham does, but most towns charge what Nottingham does.
Which is what, twenty?
Seven fifty a dog if they're neutered.
Seven fifty.
Or if you're a senior citizen, three dollars, not the dog being a senior, the owner being a senior. And so that, if we get a check that doesn't clear the bank, and we send a certified letter, and we still can't collect it, I do give those letters to the police, and they'll collect that money, but that's usually in hundreds of dollars. Some towns give this list to the Police Department, and then they go out and collect the money. I could send a certified letter to everybody, I think that that might be the best way to handle it, and then if we have four or five at the end, maybe give it to the police. I don't know if we'd have to go to court, I think it's-
I'm not like John, so I'm not in the list, so I didn't get the letter or the postcard, but, um, does-
I'm gonna look for it tonight.
Since it's kind of, it's a, it's, it's a change, and people haven't been paying them, and paying their, it sounds like annually, is it, are you highlighting the fact that, hey, this is new, or it's not new, but it's new?
It's new to Nottingham.
Yeah. Is that highlighted, those, that people understand, I guess?
Doesn't matter.
I get going back to basics, I agree, just like he's saying, maybe just, feel like we're trying to fit under the, maybe, maybe we don't need to, but just, we're gonna be like, I've never gotten this letter before, this must be, I don't want to do that either.
And, you know, we always charge a late fee anyway, and so if someone didn't pay till August, I'd charge them a dollar a month anyway. It's an automatic thing, but it's the law.
No way.
I'm just letting you know, if you hear about it, I'm sure I'll hear about it.
It's pretty big. Pretty lengthy. Yeah.
What?
Yes.
You wouldn't wanna send certified, 'cause that costs money to serve.
No, 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 what we did was we sent a regular letter out to all of those people, and hopefully, the majority of them will let us know, I don't own that dog anymore, or here's the money-
Right.
-and it will go down. And I know Kelly happened to look at it quickly, and she knew a few people moved, so hopefully that, if it goes out certified, it's gonna cost a lot of money, the license is just going up again.
Right. Yeah, try to take care of it beforehand, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else on the dog list?
No, just getting caught up.
But just to let you know that it's gonna come up, and I'm gonna send a finalized list, and that's all we gotta do.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you for getting us caught up.
Had me?
I said thank you for getting us caught up.
Oh, you won't.
Was there anything else on the Administrator Report?
Yes, sorry, I jumped.
Wait, do we still need her for the state election?
Nope.
No, okay.
Nope, we're good. The interim Town Administrator, John Scruton, had proposed a hyperlink policy be implemented, and it was based on discussion of what should be allowed for content on the website. We've received a request to add information on the town's website for when the Republican and the Democratic Committees meet, just kind of like as an FYI to new residents or people that might not know. I have spoken with New Hampshire Municipal Association, and this can be allowed, it's pretty much the choice of the town, but with that being said, we have to be careful to not engage in content discrimination, so if we allow for one private organization, then you're opening the door for others. So there needs to be some type of parameter defined, so I'm going to propose that we proceed with either creating a hyperlink or a website policy that we don't have in place right now, and just to see if you're in favor of that, so that we can perhaps put additional information out there on the town's website. Are you in favor of that?
I would be.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, most of the stuff, any committees, they seem to post physical signs by the road, but I guess having a policy in place would cover-
If they can go to one place and see what's happening.
Well, there's a lot of town websites out there that will, you know, link to local businesses and stuff like that, I mean, then it becomes an issue because you're constantly having to update the information, or there could be outdated information, I mean, it's, it's more for whoever does the, the web maintenance, which in our case, it's Kelly.
Yeah, she's got a lot to do as it is.
She does, so I mean, like, I don't wanna create more work, but I also want to be able to provide resourceful information to the community, because that's the purpose of having the website. So, you know, we'll just start working on some guidelines, and I just didn't wanna proceed forward unless, I know the hyperlink policy just, I think it just kind of went by the wayside, I think it was tabled and then never brought back up, so I will start working on that. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, July third, do we wanna proceed with the meeting that night? Again, we're open in the office, we're closed Tuesday, so there, there should be no issues unless you have-
I'm definitely not in the state.
Yeah, I don't think I will be available either on the third.
Steve?
I do, I think, uh-
So it's, yeah, just if you can meet the quorum, I definitely am gonna be four hours north of house.
I can make it, if that's what we wanna do, or we could postpone it for a week and do it the following week?
Doesn't matter to me.
Why don't we tentatively schedule it, if something comes up, we'll postpone it.
Sounds good. I'm fine with that. In your packets, I did include the test, the water test results that Frank Gonzalez had talked about at the last meeting, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review them or not, I've loosely looked at them, but I just wanted to bring that to you.
That's gonna be, I think that's gonna be a work in progress, that's gonna be a long time to go through that. It's for the water wells on, was it East Road?
East and West Lane.
Yeah.
For updates, fire and rescue, Primex has allowed a claim to be filed on Engine Two for the unreported damage to the front bumper. An estimator was out last week to look at the damage from both incidents, and the host testing was conducted last week, and everything tested out okay, so. For the town office and just general town stuff, the twenty twenty-two financial audit's well underway, I forgot to report before now, but the auditors were on site mid-May, everything went well, we had three of them on staff for three days, and the rest of it's just being done behind the scenes now, so I'm hoping that we're not gonna have a delay of the report like we did this past year, which impacted the tax rate setting, so we'll continue to stay on that. The update of the town's hazard mitigation plan started last week, with a first committee meeting held last Thursday, there were eight members, which is sufficient for the soft match portion of the grant that we have to complete the update, and it has to be done, done once every five years. Facilities Committee met tonight at six as they wrap up their report, I don't know the results, 'cause they were still meeting just before we started here. The gym floor repair from the under-drain repair has been held off until late August just because of scheduling conflicts, we just didn't wanna have them in here working a little bit here and there while summer camp was going on, so we just, Courtney and I had discussed it and decided that we're just gonna wait until late August when summer camp is done. As of right now, it's no more of a trip hazard than the already cracked tiles in the floor, so unless it becomes an issue, we're gonna try to actually like, just tape it off somehow, and just alert people that there is a little dip in the floor. The Safety Committee met on June eighth, we completed a facilities review, and we're just actively working on some immediate building needs, just to protect the people in the building and people that visit the building. For the Recreation Department, only one of the lifeguards that was set up to work this summer has completed their certification, and there are no more courses being offered, so we're down to one lifeguard for the summer, who will be working while the summer camp is at the beach.
Does that mean that they have to, do they have, 'cause it's probably a number of lifeguards, depending upon the number of kids that are there, so they have to break it up now?
Yes, I, I think that just means that there's gonna be more people monitoring-
Yeah.
-from staff. A tunnel, one of the pieces of playground equipment is broken, it's actually cracked at the base, so we've taped it off, and we got a quote to repair it, because the piece of equipment is so old, it's something that needs to be fabricated, so they're doing some research to see if it's worthwhile to do the repair, or maybe just replace the equipment stuff.
Is it plastic?
It is plastic. And unfortunately, you know, there was probably like a hairline crack, and it's to the point where it's like a significant crack now, so it's a safety hazard. So, just the, the initial quote to have it repaired was sixty-eight hundred dollars, I believe. So, we're also looking into the option of maybe just replacing that piece of equipment under the Playground Equipment Fund, but I don't know that it's going to be able to withstand a new piece of equipment. For the Highway Department, we're still actively seeking a public work structure, I have received a couple of applications that I've been reviewing. Steve Parkinson from MRI joined us last week, he's gonna be helping out two days a week until we can fill the position. Interviews are being scheduled with the candidates for the heavy equipment operator and truck driver positions, currently we have two vacancies that we're looking to fill, and tentatively looking at late July for the paving projects to commence. I've been playing phone tag with Jeff from R and D Paving, so I'm just trying to work out the details to get a contract in place, but he did say that he would be in the area towards the middle part of next month, so they have already started the provisions for the roadside cleaning, the culvert cleaning that needs to be done for that paving to commence on Deerfield. For the Recycling Center, the cardboard baler went down over the weekend, we're working to get a welding repair completed, to get it back up and running, and I've re-advertised the attendant help wanted listing, we have two and a half people over there right now, two people regular full-time, and one person filling in one maybe two days a week, and we're normally in the summer season with four people on staff, so it's making it extremely difficult, they're not able to catch everything, so we're just trying to get that back up to full staff, and with that being said, are we still scheduled for a work session next Monday, the twenty-sixth?
Yep.
Okay. And that is all I have to report for right now.
Okay. Well, our seven o'clock appointment here?
I think your seven o'clock is a bit opening.
We can hold that off if you wanna- We can hold that off if you want to, uh, eh, we'll just go ahead and do it. This is for the invitation, the bid was on a 2005 International 7600 10-wheel dump, uh, that Nottingham had just recently retired. It, uh, towards the end of the season, actually turned out to be the more reliable truck than it has been in years past. So we have two, uh, two bids. You want to do the honors of opening?
Am I reading them off?
Sure.
Yeah. Making you work.
We do have the right to refuse the bid, just so everybody knows. First bid is for $1,001. Well, the second bid is for $5,657. So there is a little bit of a...
Delta? I think, uh, Sean, it said that we were offered $3,000 in trade-in value. I don't think we're gonna get anything better off this truck.
No, and the amount of work that needs to be done to the truck, uh, you know, the, the dump body was swapped out. The only thing that's probably good on it is the frame and the motor itself, because the motor was replaced not long ago. So, um, bodies, eh, but everything else, you know, I think that, that'd be a fair price.
I don't know about, do we all approve?
Do you need a motion? Would like to make a motion?
Make them, you go ahead.
Do you want me to read it for who the, who the candidate is to and everything, just to... So, uh, I vote to recommend we accept the bid, uh, for Westside Truck and Equipment out of Salisbury, Massachusetts, for the town in Nottingham's 2005 International Truck, at the bid price of $5,657.
I'll second.
Motion made by John Moran, seconded by Matt Sherlin. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlett.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Unanimous.
Uh, Westside Truck Equipment.
Thank you, John.
Put that there for later.
Okay, uh, a little early. Mr. Bassett will be next.
You ready, sir?
I guess you're by yourself today, huh?
Well, Jim is here, but, uh, Kevin Bassett, 101 Shore Drive. Um, I dropped off the latest, uh, road survey with you, uh, two weeks ago when I was here. You asked for, um, a set of, I'll say, pointed questions, and so that's in your packet. And I'm just here tonight to answer any questions you may have with me. And, um... And I would wonder if there are responses, if it's reasonable ask for, for a couple of weeks.
I wasn't here, and I apologize. I wasn't here for the first part, but I did go through the minutes. Have you presented, or does this need to go to the planning board first?
This is a road survey. There's no, there's no subdivision activity yet. I need to know where the roads are, because these are newly roads, from a town perspective.
Yeah.
And my perspective. So once I know where the roads are, then I can continue on. The plan has always been to get three large lots for my three kids.
I guess I'm just going, uh...
In the future.
I'm looking at your questions. As far as road ownership, the land, you're requesting that the BOS also include the newly named Channel Road for, as a, as an accepted road.
Um, which question are you answering?
Uh, question one.
Number one.
Question one.
Do you know in this Warren Article 19, back on 6821, was this road Channel Road at that time, or was this Lamprey Drive at that time?
It was Lamprey Drive, to my knowledge.
It was renamed.
It's just recently, just recently changed, when Lamprey become the, recent, Lamprey is now a circle. It was never a circle.
Yeah.
By, by physical, so I believe that's why it got changed.
So then, we're not accepting a new road, we're just acknowledging the new name is kind of what you're asking here, accepts. And then the first part is saying, you're asking for clarification from the Warren Article when it said that the town in Nottingham, excuse me, Nottingham was accepting the roads as is or transferred. Your clarification is transfer was for maintenance and repair, not physical land ownership of the roads.
Correct. Because the word transfer has some legal annotations that needs to be clarified.
Correct. The, the, uh, general public petitioned items tend to have words that are not clear and have caused some confusion throughout the years, once they then re-question.
That's exactly why I'm here. And yeah, the last sentence is, um, you know, it wasn't channeled, so there is now a channel, and probably should be included in the...
Is Channel Road just the new section?
No, it's a, just a new name.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a section right here. It's, it's probably the oldest part.
Yeah.
The other part we accepted was down here. It's just one 911, the E911, they changed this portion to make it clear.
So wasn't it, so if it was accepted part of this Warren Article, wouldn't it?
It was Lamprey Drive prior.
Right. Because when you go up, you start off on Dolph Dam Road, which starts off off 156. And then the road splits.
Right.
You go straight, it continues as Dolph Dam Road. When you take your right-hand turn, that turns now to Channel Road.
Yeah.
And off Channel Road, you have Indian Run, Lamprey Drive, you have the shoots, we'll call it. So every shoot had to be named for 911 purposes.
Which was after this Warren Article.
Was after the Warren Article.
So when the Warren, I guess my question is, when the Warren Article was submitted, was this road part of Lamprey Drive?
Yes.
So it wouldn't? I guess I'm confused as to why it's not just...
It's just because it's referenced as Channel.
Okay.
Now.
So he, the last meeting, they kind of came with some, he knows where he wants to go in the future, but he's trying to get everything kind of answered by us beforehand, before he goes to the planning board, picks him back to us immediately. He's starting here. And then John was like, well, I can't just give you a pie in the sky answer for everything that you're asking, so I need pointed questions. So now he has pointed, five pointed questions. And I still have to refer to John, because I don't understand. But it seems a little bit more clear now, um, but I think this is something that can be more handed off to the lawyers in terms of when we put "transfer to the town", did we use the physical word "transfer" because we never did any type of land swap, or...
Can't take ownership.
Correct. And that's what his point was, the town can't take ownership. And the point of transfer was, as we thought, was for ma- maintenance and repair.
Interpretation.
Right.
If somebody wanted to interpret as the town owning it, it would be illegal.
Right. A Warren Article does not, uh, yes, transfer ownership per se. But that's kind of where he started on this. It is now a public road.
Yeah, can I, can we refer all comments until general public announcement, please?
So I, as written here, it looks like you were stating that you were going to put a 25-foot easement.
And that's the, uh, red dotted line on all of the named roads.
So you're doing that because the fact of being towards and, roads in Nottingham are technically, if you read on the planning board, if you were building a new road, you need the width of 25 feet.
Exactly, anticipating future, and it's a rural area. I mean, this is a 15, 20 mile, even an hour road, so.
We're not trying to make it a highway.
It's not like you need 50. It's something reasonable, so.
What are we requiring of our new subdivisions? Which if this becomes a subdivision, it should fall under the rules of the new subdivision.
But it's not a subdivision, it's an existing road.
Right. So subdivision is, you're, when you do a subdivision, you're doing, uh, a new road subdivision, which is, I mean, that's a whole different thing than if you're taking... Are they class four roads that we normally approve, though? Not class five? Well, they're brand-new roads on a subdivision. Maybe. Not always. Well, like on Deerfield Road, we did a six-lot subdivision on that road, and we didn't have to upgrade that same road anyway. We approved the six-lot subdivision off the hill.
Okay.
But that's, that was considered, that's considered a class five road anyway, right?
Yeah.
So I guess it comes down to, I don't think we were providing any answers. I mean, we might have some form, but I think the pointed answer is if you're good with them, I think we were looking for the, he wants to make sure, especially in number one, what the intent of transfer was, but I believe we have to make sure that, where that puts it, I don't know.
Yeah, question four is basically just going back to what we already approved for the new section of Lamprey Drive that was installed by the homeowners of the area over there. Is to, and that's what's the original road from the plan that you see here from 1965.
Yes.
That section was never completed until recently. And that's what I take question four is referring to, is just to say, hey, refer to the original plan, that the road was always supposed to be there, so that it should be considered, yep?
Exactly. Yeah, four and one, four and one are sort of the same, but I wanted to just highlight four because it had existing... An existing plan from way back when. Yeah, this is what... Number five, sort of self-explanatory, but, um, you know, Indian Run, just wanted to make sure that it's, that you think it's the way it's shown. That's all.
Is there questions about Indian Run? Is there a question about it? Is that why we have to...
Well, from a, I was speaking for Jim, but as from a survey point of view, you know, there is roads and driveways. You can see the green, that's the original, you know, easement, but this is actually where the road is. So what he's done is just identified where that road is existing. So Indian Run goes down, and it essentially dead-ends at Lot 5. So it's probably a simple answer, but, um, to make the, to continue with the survey and, uh, and the mapping thereof.
Got you. That was what Lamprey Drive was supposed to do when that...
Right.
Okay. Um, the, I'm just gonna read this twice to make sure that I'm reading it properly. So the road width, you're saying, transferred to, I always sort of, the landowner requests that the BOS agree to the existing as-is width of the traveled ways identified. So as they are present today.
Yes.
Without upgrading to the 25 feet, but keeping the road the way it is now, you're great, we're asking for the 25 feet, or making it for future...
For future upgrades, as the town, as the town sees, sees fit.
Some sections of the roads get, you know, it might be only 18 feet, you know, you plowed it.
I mean, when I drove down there to look at the other Lamprey River section, I agree, like it...
But there's some places wide way out, so it's just...
Yeah.
The Warren Article did say as is.
Right, well, I think it's more the fact that, you know, if, if we say, okay, here's the 25 feet that he's allowing for the road, that we're not saying that he has to, please correct me if I'm wrong, but he, he, we're not saying that, okay, 25, now you have to make the road 25. It's just the fact of saying, in the future, if it ever needs to become wider, the land is available to be wider, not at his expense, but at the town's expense. But for right now, the road stays the way it is unless the town feels they want to put the money into expanding it to make it 25 feet.
That...
35 miles an hour. You might want to expand it.
I was 35 down that road, but...
25 is, uh, 25 less posted, right?
Yeah.
Exactly.
I just want to make sure that I'm iterating what I think you're trying to interpret.
I think you have it...
From us, okay.
Correct.
I'd be a little more concerned, I mean, no offense. But if the road needs to be widened to the 25 feet from where it is now, because of the subdivision that is possible to happen, I think the burden should be on the person that's doing the subdivision to widen that road, and not the town, personally. But the planning board literally is going to say, or ask whether the, they feel that the road needs to be widened.
Mm-hmm.
Because it is a pre-existing road.
Right, but then it's gonna fall on our shoulders.
But it might not.
Because it doesn't have to be.
Because it doesn't have to be done. You know, especially if he goes, and again, I'm speaking not for the planning board, just under experience. Again, because it's a decision of a whole board, it's not one person. Um, but, you know, if he was proposing with the lot size here, a 25-lot subdivision, there might be, which isn't gonna increase the car count to...
Right.
50, 80 more cars a day, then there might be a condition put on, the planning board might issue the, the thing saying, hey, if you're gonna have this big of a subdivision, this road should be there. But again, it's all interpretation for when you get to...
I just want a bid on the town's expense.
No, I don't either.
That's, that's my feeling, personal feeling.
Yeah. I mean, again, I don't think the town should be...
But you're, he's just trying to get the foundation down, like, to accept the roads. And then when he does submit, and he's mentioned that the general thought is three plots, three lot subdivision. Now, if he brings forth that to the planning board, they're probably gonna say this road is fine. It's not like he's gonna, what we would approve or not approve in a 25 or 30-lot subdivision. They're gonna be like, well, no, this has to be changed.
I think by what he's asking us to do is for when the fact he goes to the planning board, he says, you know, for, because the planning board, the goal of the planning board is planning for the future. Is that the fact that, maybe the fact that he's offering the 25 feet for future, even though that could be well before all of us are gone 100 years from now, who knows what, what it looks like? You know, but that the town has the right for, for 25... for, for twenty-five feet of land, instead of the actual, you know, sections of fifteen, twelve, you know, it just clarifies it for future. That's what I'm hoping, that's what, what the plan and the thought process is.
Yeah, I wanted to just put the stake in the ground with you all, here and now, with this one lot and the existing roads. When I go in front of the planning board with my three kid, three lot for my kids, if they want a piece or what, expanded for justifiable reasons, then I'll deal with that then. I'm just not ready to go to the planning board. And I'm trying to get, trying to, I'm trying to figure out what I got.
Would this be a similar situation where we would request a road easement deed to secure that twenty-five-foot width?
Say it one more time?
A road easement deed. Would this be a situation where we should be...
I, I don't, I don't know. You'd have to ask the land use attorney about that. I haven't, I'm not pretty...
So that's part of the question, is do you want to proceed with getting answers to these questions, a legal opinion?
Well, because of the future road, the other roads that are out there, I don't see that it would be not a, a bad situation for us to start, for, if a situation does arise on one of the other roads, that at least we have some background, was what we're looking at, for future boards or whatever like that.
Think it'd be a wise move, I mean, I'm not a big fan of spending more legal expenses, but...
But at least we have a, I would say, in this particular case, at least we have something in front of us that's not quite hypothetical, that's more, at least, you know, easier than asking a lawyer to start answering questions that aren't...
Hypothetical.
Right, you know, take it, I mean, this is a, a good stepping stone for clarification, I think, I'm used to you guys saying...
Yeah, I didn't want to be first, but I think I am.
I think that makes sense, who's getting a legal opinion on it?
Yep.
I mean, I know how I feel about it, but...
Legal opinion?
Yay for me.
Do you, that's just...
I agree.
So I guess we're going to put this out for a legal opinion, and then we'll let you know?
Okay.
From the questions asked on the topic?
Um, I assume, I assume, I assume, I assume, um, that Ellen, you would reach out when, if or when you want me back in two weeks or thereabouts, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving back up, action items, reviews from last meeting? The recycling center.
So that'll be work session on June twenty-sixth?
Anything else? Tentative on the seven-three meeting?
Uh, just for clarification of the board, when we do the meeting on Monday, twenty-sixth, uh, the work session with the recycling center, we are going to be going over the...
Policies.
Policies, fees, fees.
It's about everything, right?
Basically, everything about...
The can crusher, the baler, whichever option you choose, or, or whether we go with a, a new trailer to haul, continue hauling the aluminum cans.
Didn't we agree to do the...
I thought we agreed by the baler.
Yeah.
We thought we were going to do the baler, but the quote was expired, and then by the time Sean had gotten the redone quote, which was acceptable, but then he had resigned, and then we were kind of basically at the point, we had already set in motion this workshop, and then I think Wayne had had a couple of questions about, do we need the can baler? Because they're, they seem to be doing fine with the trailer as-is, but they can use an additional, different type of baler.
Plastic baler.
Plastic baler, because there, there's some issues there that I think Wayne should come and really, he needs, he needs to be at this meeting, because there's some stuff, like I think there's some storage that we're not doing appropriately at the facility.
He's still able to make it.
I talked to him the other day when I was at the dump in the recycling center, and he had some good insights on different things, whatever, um, you know, the, I unfortunately can't make that meeting, but I, I think he at least had some general ideas of why one would work not over the other, and potentially, you know, the fact that they get by with the trailer, what would be the most beneficial for getting product out the door, and to the recycling company, T, TSI, I don't know what they're...
So the trailer, if anybody's taken a look at it, is really not roadworthy, so that was the idea.
Yeah, that's what I heard, yeah.
Yeah, so that was the other reason, replacing it would be cheaper than getting a crusher, if I understand, so...
It wasn't cheaper by much.
It wasn't, yeah. It was still going, it was going to be like eight thousand dollars for the basic trailer, and then we would have had to put sides on it, and...
And then they have to take it once a week.
Could almost take the sides off that one, put it on the...
Then you have to pay them to go once a week and bring it.
Well, that's why they got the truck up there now.
Yeah, that's what it breaks.
To break, right.
They need that greater truck.
Well, you still have the...
Well, again, to go to that truck, that truck wasn't in that bad a shape, Wayne was looking at it, but I think it might be beneficial to just bring it to like HCR or somebody in town and have it gone over. I think it just has like a check engine light and a few things, but it seemed like it was, might not be suited for plow duty, but it might have long life available for doing runs, recycling center runs, that it, with a little bit of maintenance, a little bit of rust preventative, anything like that, the truck could still drive useful, but if we went to the baler route, you weren't using that truck, you were using dump trucks, because it was going to be...
Right.
And then you're getting into using the, the road crew to bring the, then you're getting the two departments mixing back and forth to get the, which is easier with one public works director who ran the two crews. Now it's just like a phone caller going through Ellen to try to get this stuff coordinated.
All right, well, a lot to talk about on the workshop day.
Yeah.
What time will the workshops start? Will it be a six-thirty workshop or a seven o'clock workshop?
I'll leave that up to you guys.
Name your tone.
You're the one who asked the question.
Yeah.
I, I, I always thought every meeting in this town should be at seven, because that's all the other, this is the only meeting that's at six-thirty, really, you know, everything else is at seven, so I like the seven o'clock.
Well, I mean, it could anticipate to be a long meeting, so...
A half hour here, a half hour there, it's a different...
So seven o'clock?
Yep.
True.
Matt?
I will slump in here.
Oh, you're not going to be here. Seven o'clock it is.
How about midnight, Matt?
I would love to be there, I'd probably use it the most out of anybody here.
And in the morning, you could be here, right?
All right, anything else on that? No? Assessing. We have timber, solar, we've got a lot of solar. Everybody reviewed those?
Yep.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the assessing for map twenty-three, lot two-twenty-five, map forty-six, lot seven, and map seven, lot one N, the timber yield tax.
Second. Okay, motion made by Tim DeBrio, seconded by Steve Welch, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Schron.
Aye, Tom Warren.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Are you unanimous? Who would like to make the solar?
I didn't get a chance to quickly look at those, Kelly had all the packet information, I didn't, or maybe it didn't come through in the email. Is it the set value for every single one, or is it different based off the size of the solar? It's different based off the size of the...
How many panels they have, right?
Okay. I was just curious, I didn't get to read all the detailed information into it, but I know that the state kind of set this up, right? It's a state-funded.
You should have been having more.
All right. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the solar exemptions for map eight, lot nine-twenty-five, map four, lot five-five, map thirty-seven, lot twenty-five dash eight, map fifty-six, lot seven, map fifty-six, lot one, map fifty-five, lot two dash one, and map one, lot one-ninety-one slash one dash two.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Tim DeBrio, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Schron. Aye, Tom Warren.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Okay, unanimous.
This solar exemption, I think it came out, article, they thought that we shouldn't be taxing it as somebody's value.
Yep.
But we have to put a value on it, you just don't get taxed on the value of what it is.
All right, general business, special actions we determine here. So, any more discussion on that? Okay. Already went through our appointments, review action items for next meeting?
Is the workshop open to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Waiting for the next meeting.
So the Goncalves water test results, it is a very large thing that we're going to have to deal with, is it like a next meeting thing? Is it a, because we kind of have it, but what are we doing?
Well, I think we're reviewing it and digesting it, and then we'll, at some point, meet and go over it and figure out a game plan.
But just, we, we received that it's an item here, it's like, are we kicking it to the next meeting, or I don't...
I would like to initiate contact with Primex, just to see how they feel we should handle, because it, I, I mean, it is potentially a claim against the town.
Yep.
If we're at fault for causing a water quality problem.
Well, I think he was saying specifically that it was not us, but it was the contractor.
Exactly, it, it has to do with the town's road treatment.
Correct, but then he was getting into the whole thing with the subcontractor, um, was not, didn't meet that state green salting certification that goes out there, which does the town, did we meet that, do we?
It's not required, but good idea.
It's a BMP.
I mean, besides, I mean, it seems like something we'd want to do to hopefully reduce our salt content down, and he said that's a huge expense for the town, but then looking at his thing, where he, we don't salt a cer- certain section of the road, what had, like, so like he wants to reduce salting, but then how does that put us on the other end if somebody's driving their car down the road, or, and then they veer off a road because now it's icy, because we're not, and then we have signs up saying, no salting.
It's a salt-sand mix, isn't it? If I recall, it's a salt-sand mix, so there'll still be something there. If you reduce the salt, there'll be sand.
But I mean, the truck's driving down the road, and then it hits a sign that says, don't salt, or no salt, or something, I don't, I don't know what the exact sign says, and then they're stopping, or he's standing by the road telling him no, or, and then the truck is like, fine, they turn it off, they drive around the corner, and the next person around the road comes around, and there's a, it just, definitely want to reach out, because this is a very...
This actually came up, and I believe, and again, this is off recollection, so please hold us that, the town isn't liable for the fact of somebody's misuse of their car on the town road due to, you can't go to the town and say, like if it was a pothole and you hit it with your car, you can't go to the town and sue the town for the pothole.
Okay.
So I presume that would probably be under the same thing as if, if you're driving on the road, and we haven't plowed yet, and it's a snowy evening, and you go off the road because you're on the snow, the town can't be at fault that you're driving on a snowy road.
Right, I, I don't know, it just, it's plowing that one section, and then reducing treatment in one area, which I know like in Massachusetts on ninety-five, there are signs that say reduced salt usage to alert the driver that road conditions could be different. I believe that's the intent of the signage we have on Kelsey yourself. I just didn't know where we were leaving, because you're asking for next meeting items, and we didn't really go over it, but I don't know what to do with it either. It is much bigger than.
Well, let's, let's wait and see what Primex have to say, and we'll go from there.
What are the questions that we're going to be asking?
I think.
Think, or what they're for road, or are we liable, are we...
Well, I'm kind of on the same page with you, I don't think we are liable, just like the state wouldn't be liable for any accidents on the highway.
Well, she's asking about the salting, damaging the well, which he has cases, yes.
I just want to make sure I know what you're asking, so that we're on, that, that, these are the proper, these are the questions that we're searching for, as well, I'm just trying to find, make sure we have clarification, that that's...
And I truly think if you do low salt or no salt, you should do it for the whole road, not just part of the road.
On a road, this, this road's tiny, it's not even, I mean, we're not talking, you're not talking a six-mile road here, you're talking three hundred yards of, of road, maybe, or something.
A little more than that, but yeah.
Okay, I mean, just spitball from, I've only been on it once in my life, so...
It's not that, not that long.
Turns around, so...
I was just curious too, that's all, I was making sure we, not dropping it, because he obviously is still providing tons of stuff, and he was, he did say that the state had replaced some wells based off something similar, but I don't know where that came from.
Okay. All right, uh, so I will now open this up to any public comments.
Can we put this also, before we do that, one second, this will be an action item for our possible July third meeting, or meeting after?
July third.
Okay.
Yes.
Tentatively, right now.
Tentatively, yes. Any public comments?
Bob DeRosio, Seventy-Five Stage Road. I understand that the Water Cross event is coming up this weekend, and I hear there's a private ambulance that's been hired to cover the event. Who's paying for that, you know?
It'd be my understanding, it would be the, the, the event, the event would be paying for that, not the town.
Okay, so the invoice that's being sent to some people for payment is irrelevant, or?
I'm not aware of any invoices being sent.
Did you get one?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I would have to look back through, but...
If you don't want me, where are you getting that information? When you say invoices, you mean the town receiving the invoices?
Uh, no, a person received an invoice from McGregor, the ambulance service.
Yeah.
Uh, asking for payment.
We can address, I can...
We can address that, I mean, I, I would assume that it, it's, it's being handled much like the police special detail is, it would be billed to the applicant. If it gets billed to the town, then we would then bill the applicant for it, it's not a service that the town is sponsoring on behalf of that.
Who's manning, is our, are people manning the ambulance as well?
No. It's, I think it's AMR, or are you?
McGregor.
McGregor.
It's McGregor, it's their ambulance.
Yeah.
So now, our people aren't?
Right. It's my understanding that we use McGregor from time to time, and we always have.
Oh, sure.
For...
For mutual aid.
Or for calls if our ambulance is out and we get another call.
Mutual aid.
And I think that was what those invoices were.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I can look into the invoice, I haven't personally seen it, but if that is the case, then it will be billed to the applicant, or to the, the person hosting the event.
All right.
But how much better does that get? We're getting the people to cover an ambulance, it frees our ambulance up to take care of our own residents.
Sure, well, it should be...
I mean, that's a win-win in my book.
It shouldn't be our ambulance sitting there all day for the event.
Right, right, so, I think that's a fantastic, yes, but I'm just...
The police that worked the detail the first year of it, it was a detailed job, so it wasn't actually...
And I, I think it was, um, it was Deerfield or Raymond that provided coverage.
Right, and that was billed to the event also, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Cindy Bloom from Seven Blight Road, and I'm curious, is there any news on the fire department front, the investigation?
So the investigation is completed, and...
About two weeks ago, yeah.
And the, we're going to be receiving a report tonight.
Correct.
And we're going to go into non-public and discuss it. That's all I can provide to you at this time.
All right, and then about, it was more than four weeks ago, I heard a rumor that one of the Board of Selectmen had been discussing this with his wife, or spouse, I assume it's a wife, and that information had gone to other members of the public, and those members were aware of what the issue was. And I just wanted to say that, that's something that you all need to look at yourselves for, and you should not be discussing these kind of issues with your spouses. This kind of information is also now being posted on Facebook, and it makes you all look bad. So I just wanted to say, you might look at yourselves for a minute in that private meeting, and remind yourselves not to discuss with family.
Thank you.
And your name again? And your name again?
Cindy Bloom.
Thank you, Cindy.
Okay, so.
There's one item I'd like to bring up before we, Declaration of Independence at the town square, Tuesday, July fourth, eight to ten o'clock, it's something we did during the town's three-hundredth, and we hope to continue it for years to come, so, if anybody out there wants to come up to the square and, and hear the Declaration of Independence read, I welcome you, I encourage you to come, we'll have some light refreshments, and it'll be a short morning. Oh, you're pushing me now, aren't you? I will probably supply some bacon and egg sandwiches, probably an English muffin, encourage people if they want to bring something, to bring something, we can share it, hopefully we'll have some coffee there, maybe some juice, and, hey, we'll serve it until the food runs out, and.
All right.
It'll be all together. Parking on the square, um, one side of the road, I'll mark one side, there's no parking, and we can park on the other side, depending on, if the rain ever stops, we can park on the other side, in the, in the field there, but that all depends on how soft it is, and.
Right, exactly.
Well, that's town property there, so we, we haven't got to worry about him, so, but I, I wouldn't want to mar up the, the square for parking if, if it's gonna be wet, but we can park up and down Deerfield and, and Led's Farm, and hopefully have a great turnout, and.
Hopefully nice weather.
Hopefully nice weather.
Okay, so we will be closing the public comment of this meeting, and at this time we'll be.
Thank you all for coming.
Going into non-public for RSA ninety-one dash.
A three-two A and C.
A three-two A what?
A and C.
A and C.
Motion on that one, right.
Comes a motion, we need a second.
I'll say.
Home favor.
Third, fourth. Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Schron.
Aye, Joe Warren.
Aye, Ben Barlet.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Thank you, Nottingham, good night.